Can you give that to Rachel?
Sure.
I know she's gone already and she just needs that for the tour.
Okay, I'll get that to her.
Yes, you know, we discussed this presentation by the same time.
We can read the call and do a workshop.
City Secretary, would you please read the call?
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 15th, 2010, at 5:30 PM and 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A, Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation and Brownsville Sports Park Improvement Update.
Okay. Delina, before is yours.
Mayor Honorable Commission, what I'm here to do today is to give you a little bit of background on the expenses that BCIC is doing in regards to the 3 million CO that was approved at the last meeting. Again, the payment for the CO will go to the City of Brownsville. It is out of the BCIC funds of the quarter cent sales tax that they get annually. Again, just a little bit of background on the sports park. We did acquire the property, 150 acres in 2004 for 2 million. We got architectural engineering for 1.6. We had the groundbreaking in August of 2006. The Phase 1A, we did the infrastructure investment of 10.5 that was completed in April of 2007. This also included an upgrade to the lift station that we did cooperatively with PUB. PUB realized that there was a lot of growth going in the north part of Brownsville and so in order to try to maximize the expenses in that area, we went ahead and enlarged the lift station. And the Phase 1B amenity investment at that stage was 13.2 and that construction took place between September of 2007 and December of 2008. Again, just to give an overview of the amenities that are out at the sports park. It's five, 320 lighted softball fields with scoreboards, shaded concrete bleachers for each field with seating for 300 per field, concession building with hot food service and restrooms, including family restrooms. The multi-sport field complex include 10 lighted terrains, one artificial turf that currently seats 864 people. The concession building with hot food service and restrooms, including family restrooms, and a south restroom building. The South Lake, which is approximately seven acres, it has a depth of about nine feet, fishing pier and two boardwalks, there's concrete board ramp there, boat ramp. The North Lake, which is approximately 2.17 acres, it has a depth of about eight feet. Again, the way the park was designed is so that all the water would drain into these lakes and then there is a pump house which functions then to irrigate the sports park. Again, if there is a shortage of rain, rainfall, we also have a connection to the irrigation district canal that lies just north of the park so that we do not use the more expensive PUB water. The Beach Sports Cove is a 56,000 square foot multi-use lighted area. It has a 12 volleyball court capacity, drinking fountain, shower tower, fabric shade structure pavilion. The playground area, we have the West Playground featuring the webscape climber and then the East Playground featuring the mega tower play structure, which was recently featured in the newspaper as far as being the model playground to be able to be used, that they're using for legislation hopefully in the state of Texas where in essence if Brownsville can make a playground that's 50%, this one's 80% accessible for all children, then other communities in the state of Texas should also be able to. There's also the South Lake Pavilion and amphitheater. The skate park is 12,000 square feet. There's asphalt trails, BMX course, three basketball courts, west shade structure and restrooms, four drinking fountains, nine outdoor grills, trail benches, bike racks, picnic tables and concrete trash cans. Again, as you will note, where the star indicates is where the sports park is located. As you can tell, the majority of our parks here in Brownsville are located in the south part of town. What you see outlined in red is the actual property that was purchased by BCIC for the development of this park. Again, this is the revised design layout. It went through several different designs. Again, what we have here is that, or what has occurred and one of the reasons that this has come about is the state legislature, Senator Lucio, was able to get some changes done with UIL. Historically, all UIL state tournament games were always played in Austin so that from all areas of the state you had to go to that location and that single city was able to benefit from the revenues of having people come in from out of town. As a result of the work that was done by the Senator and others, it was allowed then that the tournaments would be held in other parts of the state. BISD in cooperation with the City of Brownsville then bid it out to have the state soccer tournament be played here in Brownsville at the sports park. As a result of that, then, one of the things that was going to be necessary for that, of course, is additional seating at the artificial turf and also dressing rooms. With additional seating, of course, comes additional restrooms and concessions. In addition to, because of the attention that the sports park has generated, as y'all are aware, the semi-pro soccer team has also then relocated to the sports park and they did obtain a waiver until we are also able then to put the additional facilities in. And of course, this week, we're having the Texas Police Games and several of the different games are being held here. Again, that was when the sports park project was first conceived. That was one of the primary ideas is that we would be able to have a location where we would be able to bring in tournaments that brings in people from out of town, brings in outside dollars to our community and thus more sales tax revenue, not only for the 4B Corporation but also the 4A Corporation and of course, the City of Brownsville. The Beach Sports Cove, some of the things that we've been able to have there is the US Beach Junior Tour, which we will now be a part of annually. And again, the Texas Police Games and as we understand, it's also an emerging both collegiate and secondary school sport.
Delina?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we working closely with the CVB to keep track of hotel occupancy numbers?
My understanding is that because the CVB is, has, as one of their focus areas, they realize the importance of this. We do get the hotel motel numbers and we're trying to, at this point in time, correlate between events and then the increases in hotel occupancy. We had already seen that a couple of years ago as we started tracking time periods when Little Miss Kickball had their state tournaments. We would see, so to speak, the rise in hotel occupancy. Again, at this point in time, it's anecdotal but we have been also in speaking to the hotel motel owners, tell us that it's been a boon for them, that every time there's a tournament or any type of activity, it fills up their rooms.
I would like to see those statistics when it comes to occupancy and increases in sales revenue as they correlate to the events we're having at the sports park.
Again, as I just discussed, the current development has attracted additional park use requests for events and tournaments. We continue to capture and develop the tourism sector of the economy, sport tourism, and we're trying to promote and develop this business type of enterprise. These are the costs that we are looking at, at the bleachers. The stadium style bleachers that will be put in is 893,500. The buildings in that particular, at the artificial turf, we're looking at the restrooms, dressing rooms concession and storage. And again, this kind of gives you an idea of at least a preliminary design because we're working in conjunction with the bleacher contractor because we're trying to run this concurrently. We're looking at a deadline of approximately the end of February to try to complete this project. So while we have the bleachers in essence being constructed, then they'll be doing the site work and putting in the structures, the ground structures. And again, we're trying to work all those different details out so that we can get this project running on a timely basis. What you're seeing here then is the bleacher design and they designed it based on the area that was available. And one of the things that we did is you'll notice on that one middle section, which is the T, the larger section, we're having a roof put in. Traditionally, as you see in the football stadiums here around town, you don't see a roof. But when you're looking at tournaments, usually these things will run over three or four days and they run from early morning to late evening. So this is also to help with the sun in our area. Again, these just kind of give you a sample kind of design that we're looking at for bathrooms, including companion care bathrooms, concessions. And then in the Beach Sports Cove area, one of the things we immediately discovered as soon as we had the grand opening since that time period, from in the morning where you have individuals coming out and using it, from older individuals, all age groups, to the evening. It's been quite a busy area but again, one of the issues is the request for the bathrooms. And again, we're trying to make it a showplace so that we can maybe attract additional type of events there in the sand volleyball area. And this is just photos of the actual opening. These were some of the other infrastructure and again, just planning for various infrastructure improvements that we're looking at at this point in time. We don't have the funding to be able to address these particular issues. We did approach the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation to assist us with some of this funding. In a meeting last night, they did make an assessment that they would be able to, they did not feel that they could fund the south parking lot or the service road that runs from Amelia Lane to the facility but that they could assist with, which are in essence, city streets from Sports Park Boulevard to making a four lane boulevard, from Old Alice to Sports Park, from the Old Alice, which runs from Sports Park Boulevard to Narango Road and then Old Alice that runs from East Parking Lot around to Amelia Lane and then making Amelia Lane to roads. As you can see then, on the top area, which is a red, would be making that into a four lane boulevard. All the easements, when BCIC acquired the property and went ahead and platted this out, all the easements were also designed into this for future development. So then you can see where the road then from Old Alice heading south and around to meet with Amelia Lane. And again, this is to be, and then at the very north part, Narango Road, which provides you access to 511. And again, this is to be able to increase the amount of accessibility to the park from various points and make it easier for traffic control. I think many of y'all were out there for 4th of July so you can see how quickly the traffic can accumulate and this is some of the issues that we're hoping to address with this. Again, so this is kind of more of a aerial view of that area so you'll see that it's going to be a very direct connection to 511. You'll have it go around and Amelia Lane. And you'll notice again, the proposed parking lot at this point in time in our planning, we can't address that issue but it is open area and we can use it easily for any kind of overflow parking. Again, economic impact, sales tax revenue is what we're looking at. We're also trying to do industry diversification, employment opportunities as we try to increase the tourism industry in our community and again, quality of life to attract industry. What, again, we do work with BDC, one of the things, even when we were first planning the sports park, that became quite evident in speaking with Mr. Hiltz. A lot of times we can, different communities can meet the economic benefits from other cities but the deciding point, a lot of times, from various corporations is, do I want to live here? And that's the issue that we're trying to address by having all of these different types of quality of life venues here in Brownsville. Again, just looking at this from an economic impact, sales tax revenue, we went on ahead and used the regional impact, input-output modeling system that to do an economic analysis. And we did a very, very conservative analysis looking at a five-year period. If we looked at 474,000 visitors, 142,000 from out of town. Again, this is a five-year period, four to hotel room, running about 41 to 4480. So what you're looking at is the impact of sales tax that this would have from non-loging revenue, then lodging related. Again, because you have to consider that many are local and would stay, would not be staying in hotels. Then you look at the local sales tax revenue, the hotel tax revenue. So you have the total public revenue at 1.5 or about 13.9 per year. Although this may seem, when you look at it at first glance, may seem like quite a lot. If you actually look at the information that's put out by the Texas Tourism Office of the Governor and Economic Development and Tourism, which is studies that are done by the Dean Runyon Associates Office, you can see that for Brownsville, total direct travel spending is well over $200 million per year. And if we look at the local tax receipts, again, you can look at $3,600,000 per year. And we want to look at industry diversification. And what we're trying to do is to capture the leisure and hospitality type industry. So you can see that, and I did this for a time period, pulled it off. You can see the industry, at this point in time, we only have 9%. Employment was 11,300 and wages were 44 million. But what you're looking at is an industry that we have not fully tapped into and we have an opportunity to do so just because of what we have in our community for people to come to this area and our geographical location. This is a year-round site. Total direct earnings, again, from the information from the Economic Development and Tourism of the Office of the Governor, you can see from '08 at approximately 41, 42 million. So what employment opportunities, as we continue to grow this industry, is small business development opportunities for tour operators, additional staffing at tourist locational, additional staffing at retail and restaurant type businesses. And you can see then the impact that it can also have on employment and how Brownsville has been steadily increasing and that's the trend we would like to hopefully continue. Again, there's also the quality of life issue, as I mentioned earlier. There is, you know, the industry recruitment amenity of addressing quality of life concerns. And there's also the issue that if we have these types of venues available, then it does increase the population's accessibility to healthy activities and by people becoming more active, you reduce both school and business sick days and you increase mortality rate and more importantly, the quantity of active living days. Questions?
Any questions? No questions, thank you, Delina.
I'll get that for you. Thank you.
No, you can, it's a workshop, you can ask questions. Please come up, state your name and ask your question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I enjoyed your presentation. I am here for a couple of reasons tonight but primarily I have a question here for her. First, how much money have we spent so far on this development? Because I saw your budget there but I know that didn't include all the numbers. So what is the total amount that we've spent so far?
33, 32 million.
So where's the 44 million that I keep seeing reported? What's that number? Different? Okay, 32 million. What was our original budget? 22 to 26?
Okay, well, and that's a little bit difficult because what occurred as a process went through is, for example, as we went through different stages.
Take the mic, please, Delina.
For example, when we came to the City Commission many years ago with the original scope of work and what we had planned to do, the City Commission at that point in time changed our scope of work dramatically and increased the scope of work because they wanted to see more of the sports park developed at that time. And so, given that, we went on ahead and increased the scope of work to be able to address the concerns that the commission had.
But isn't the 44 million part of that future expansion? What he's referring to?
I may not have the right number, so I was trying to discern that.
I heard 60 million total when it's all said and done.
Yeah, I don't know. I've heard different numbers but you're telling me 32 million is what we've spent so far so we'll go off of that. So, but right now, we're asking to put another 7.5 million on there? What are we asking for?
BCIC is 3.13.
3.13?
3.13. Of the total CO that's being requested for the sports park?
Yes, BCIC's portion is 3.1 million.
Okay. Let me make sure.
But that's not including the roads or the other amenities of...
Well, so you guys are only here today asking for 3.5 million?
3.1.
3.1 million.
And that's already been approved.
That's already been approved.
So then, if it's already been approved, what is our purpose for having the workshop?
First, I think it's important that you understand one thing.
Please make me understand.
In order to compete, to bring the UIL down here, when we secured the UIL, we had to build it up to meet their needs. So it was approved because of that. So the 31.13 is a necessity to, it's like doing the Olympics and getting your city ready for it.
The purpose, yeah, the purpose of the workshop is to keep the commission updated on how we're progressing on the project and we'll continue to do that.
The commission and the citizens. So my next question to you is, what is our current debt load that we're spending on that? How much does it cost us per month? Like, how much money are we spending?
Are you talking for this particular?
Yeah, for this particular project. No, for the total project, how much is this costing the City of Brownsville per month?
Who are you with again?
What's that?
Who are you with again?
Doesn't matter who I'm with, Commissioner.
I'm just asking who you're with. His name is Craig Clover.
Yeah, I'm Craig and I'm me, it doesn't really matter who I am. What I'm trying to do is stand up, as you can see, there's hardly any citizens here, okay? And what I'm trying to do is stand up and be a voice, at least for myself, for the City of Brownsville and for the people of Brownsville. I realize, my question is this, is how can we continue to spend millions more dollars on a project that's on the north side of town and we won't do anything to redevelop downtown? And I was originally coming here because of the ordinances and I'll be talking about that too. But I don't understand how we continue to pour more and more millions, which I guess has already been done because I missed that appointment.
Well, Craig, first let's answer your question. Pete, can you answer his question? How much is the debt to services?
I don't have all the numbers. I can go to Miles and get them but the park was for quality of life project. BCIC can only fund quality of life projects and obviously the sports park is part of this.
And I'm going to head and address that question. For this particular one, we're looking at a debt of about 400,000 per year over the next 20 years. We've also taken out a 10-year CO for 3 million. So that, we're spending about, I want to say, 350 a year, per year.
And then we have the...
And then we have the 1.4 for the 21 million that's over the 20 years. In regards to your question about downtown development, again, remember that at least currently, the way the BCIC Board has functioned since its inception is it's an application process. The application that we have received for downtown, in fact, it was this past year, was for architectural design. And so, they submitted it and that, it was last year, they submitted it and that was approved and that's been funded. Again, so, right, so again, it's, we go through an application process of what has come through.
I guess, I don't want to take up everybody's time here and I don't have all the facts but what I'm here for is to state that regardless of what is going on, we have a downtown that is vibrant and beautiful and we continue to draw our development north and spend millions and millions of dollars for our quality of life improvement and we need to bring more development to bear downtown. There's things we can do. We recently had the facade issue and that was declined. There's things we can do to spend money that are quality of life issues. We're losing our money from Mexico because they can't come over and spend like they want to anymore and we need to do something in downtown. So I'm tired of seeing millions of our dollars go north and now we're doing this, you know, this is a CO and forgive me, I'm not the most educated on my city definitions and how these things work. But here I hear, we're broke, we're broke, we can't do this, we can't do that and now it's already a foregone conclusion that we're spending millions more on the park. So that's my concern. Why do we continue to spend millions more when we don't need to? This doesn't have to be done right now.
Okay, one of the issues again is you're saying it doesn't need to be done right now. As a matter of fact, the reason that we're doing it right now is because we do have a deadline because of the state soccer tournament that's going in and we have an opportunity to be able to showcase our city to be able to bring additional business and revenue down to our city. In regards into this whole downtown area, you also, if you look at the history of BCIC, if the Museum of Fine Arts, BCIC funded that for 1.4 million. If you look at the Children's Museum, BCIC funded that for a million. If you look at the Brownsville Historical Association, there is a multitude of projects that have been funded for that. All that, all of those are in the downtown area. The Old City Cemetery Center, that was funded by BCIC. The improvements at the cemetery, those were funded by BCIC.
I appreciate, I'm not here to call out BCIC or disrespect BCIC's improvements because they've done some great things. What I'm here to state is, I appreciate what BCIC has done and several people have voiced to me, we like the park and I like the park. I've taken my kids there. But I think there's a point, soccer tournament or not, where we need to kind of slow down on spending money on ad hoc items or whether or not ad hoc, planned items for a soccer tournament. There are things that we need to do and I'm going to wrap it up and leave it at that. I appreciate what BCIC has done but we need to consider a balanced approach to this, not just BCIC money but our city needs to take care of our downtown because it's rotting and decaying, we're going north and we need to do it. So look forward to hearing from me on the ordinance section.
Craig, let me do this. Invite you to come tomorrow to my office around 11 o'clock. I'll get the Finance Director and Delina together. I know you're very engaged and we welcome that. That way, you get all, the full picture of what's going on and we'll do a little presentation for you and we can answer your questions there if you'd like to, 11 o'clock, my office.
I'd like to say something.
I appreciate that.
And you know what, and you read the Brownsville Herald and they love that 21, that number 21 is the number that's been plaguing Brownsville so they add to the disbelief that it was 21 million dollars that they're asking for. It's totally wrong, man. You can't, you can't listen to everything in the Brownsville Herald. They're never going to cut the city or anybody else a fair shake when writing the story. So I would ask you to, and I will meet with you and Delina, I chair the BCIC Board. And you know what, we've been working real hard on trying to improve stuff at the sports park with at the same time funding a lot of projects with nonprofits in the downtown area. We have balance. The perception that we're broke at BCIC, we're not broke. But you know what, we're putting our efforts into something that our forefathers started back in 2003. I have an obligation and the people on my board have an obligation to use this sales tax. It's not taxes coming out of your property tax or we don't have to raise your taxes tonight after we, if we pass this stuff tonight. But bottom line, the BCIC stuff at the sports park, that was approved already. The GBIG giving money to, for the roads, that has nothing to do with the bond tonight that's for roads, that's a different, the Brownsville Herald lumped it all together like we're going after this 21 million dollar bond but that's furthest from the truth. It's furthest from the truth because first of all, the 3.1 was approved last meeting. So that shouldn't even be an issue tonight. The 2.3 from the GBIG, they've already done that. They're going to give that to build those roads in that area. It had nothing to do with raising taxes, had nothing to do to the CO. The 11 or 13 million dollars that we're going out for city stuff with our streets, if we want streets... if we want streets, we got to go out for this bond. If you want to fix streets, police, safety through cars, everything else that's on that laundry list that the city needs, that's the issue tonight. But I hope you don't look at it like, "Oh, all this money's going to the sports park," because it's not, and we're funding it. B C I C, our board, is funding, is paying the city back. So there's nothing to have to raise taxes or anything like that. And our board's thriving, and you're seeing tangible things at the sports park. And you know what? Our Maquilas are down, the Port of Brownsville's down, they're laying off people because of oil. Our economic engine right now has to, we have to look for other economic engines to support what we have in Brownsville, and there's eleven billion-dollar industry in sports tourism. And if Brownsville, the best city for weather, doesn't tap into that, we're going to go by the wayside. And just so you can feel comfortable tonight, tonight, nothing's going to be approved for the sports park inside because we already did that last week. Tonight, the money that it's going to be, what, eleven or thirteen million dollars, something like that? That's for the city's improvement, for the police, fire, for the roads. So we read the Herald, and everybody talks to me, "Why are we doing this?" The Herald doesn't get it right, you know? And they can say what they want, but they don't get it right all the time. And people look at the Herald like it's a stamped truth, and they shouldn't be like that. It shouldn't be like that at all.
Well, respectfully, Commissioner, I didn't have my numbers exactly right, I will admit. I had to rush to get here, but I didn't think it was the twenty-three. I understand where the other money's going. In principle, I'm here because I believe we've spent enough on the sports park, and I realized even before I came here that the money was already approved. But I'm here to voice the silent number of people who have come to me and talked to me through Facebook and spoken to me and said, "We need to stop spending money on the north side of town. We need to spend some money in downtown." And I realized, you know, the Development Commission has done a lot.
But let me tell you something.
She's listed some things.
We're going to take care of...
But there's many thanks, Commissioner, there's many things.
Commissioner, everybody has a different perspective. I myself feel like we're building a white elephant over there, but that's my opinion, okay? I myself feel that there's more to the picture of the operating maintenance that we're going to be stuck with that's not part of this, you know? We're issuing, we're looking to issue sixty point four million dollars. There's some things that I wish, you know, it would have been here, that are not here. So we have differences of opinion, but on this particular issue, if you will sit down with us tomorrow, I'll see you there at eleven o'clock, okay?
Mayor, may I have the floor? Real quick, Craig, I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Downtown is my district, I represent...
I know, and I see you working very hard to represent your district.
There's a lot of folks that do quite a bit every day. Downtown, obviously, is one of the front doors to this community and to the country. There's a lot that needs to happen. Four years ago, or five years ago, I should say, we created D R A C, Downtown Revitalization Advisory Committee. And what that did is it took the public, downtown owners, to come together, meet once a month, and to do different things. Imagine Brownsville came along. We took D R A C, and we funneled that into the Downtown Committee, and it started to evolve. Now we're at United Brownsville. We meet tomorrow at five-thirty to go over strategies and outcomes as to how we will rebuild and enhance this area, this part of town, as we all know, it should be. And so, it's a constant work and a struggle. How do you do the following without resources? How do you do this and that? It's coming. Part of the things that we'll do tonight is hopefully approve the Entertainment District for downtown, which staff has worked very, very hard. And I think that will be the catalyst. Years ago, well, two or three years ago, I wish we could be talking about a border wall, a boardwalk along, near Hope Park. But we can't because of the whole border wall issue. And that's taken that project, which would have been the other catalyst, or the primary catalyst, to really spur the development that people want in this area. And so, that was a major setback for us, but I think we're regrouping, we're going to come back. The project's not dead. It's, again, it's a work in progress because of the work that the city needs to do and with its funding limitations, but we're going to get there. And I think through United Brownsville and staying focused with that and doing what staff has in place, I think we're going to see some things turn around. Now, it's not all bad in downtown. As you know, we do have some owners that have restored their buildings. And without their help, Mark Clarks and Daniel Lance, a lot of folks that have really put money into this area to make it better, and that's a great thing. The issues that are happening across the border don't help, but the people of this community and the people that do cross are much more resilient, and that is a huge benefactor for the city of Brownsville. So there's a lot of work to do. We're going to keep doing the work. And I appreciate your interest, and I'm sure everyone else's interest, in revitalizing this area because, again, it tells a story. It's our front door, as I believe the late Governor Ann Richards once said. So there's a lot to do, we're going to do it, and like I said, a sports park needs to get done, you know? It'd be easy to say, "Just, you know, put it aside and let's move forward." We should almost be done. Godwin, I think we're almost done, we're ready to start the new project. Again, a lot of things should be happening in this area, and they will. And like I said, with all, it takes time. But I think we're on the right path, and hopefully, tonight and subsequent meetings, we'll see more things happening for downtown. But I appreciate you coming, Craig.
Mayor, may I say something? We've also put in on the multimodal, the bus multimodal project, five point five million dollars came from just the general fund. The rest came from federal funds, which totals to about thirty-one million dollars. So thirty-one million dollars is going into the downtown area for that particular project.
His concern is my concern that these people that are risking their monies and investing downtown cannot sustain that investment unless we revitalize downtown. That's what you're trying to say.
Well, essentially, yes. We need their support, we need the support of the city governance, and I do appreciate everything you guys do, all of you. I'm not here just to complain, but I am here to make sure that we know that there are people who will support downtown, and such, people such as Daniel Lance and the owner of Gallery of Four-Nine and other people who are here tonight and who aren't here want to see downtown. It is our asset, it is our crown jewel, it is the gold of Brownsville. And we've spent, if we would have put a fraction of the money, and I know, again, that we have, that you guys have invested in downtown, but a fraction of this thirty-three million that's going to grow to whatever amount into downtown, into some TERS or TIFs and some other things that could incentivize ownership and development, we would be seeing growth and stimulating activity down there. I know people want to come over and go to the Entertainment District. We have a great university, people from Adam Morris want to come over and go out, the Winter Texans, the Spring Breakers, all these people want to go and spend money on it. We need a sixth street, we need this downtown, we need to start a court.
Craig, that's coming. You know, what you talk about, and again, it's coming. And like I said, I believe as part of United Brownsville and what we're doing with staff and planning department, it's going to happen, it's coming soon.
Well, thank you.
But stick around, Craig, because this sixteen point four million is not a done deal yet. We haven't approved it yet, okay?
Well, I would hope we would kind of stop and just enjoy the sports park as it is.
The three point one-three deal of the sports park, that was done in preparation with the U I L. So that's done.
Well, that's important to attract...
The rest, we're going to go over here as a community and discuss and see what we approve, all of it, none of it, or part of it, or what, okay? So stick around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, I appreciate your time.
Okay. Can we move on to item B?
Item B, presentation by Texas Intercom Energy.
At the request of P U B, this is a sensitive matter that they're working on, and they would rather that the commission tabled this. I believe they contacted Mark. P U B is working on this, and it'd be unfortunate that we put out what P U B is working on.
Just for the record, I put this on after I talked with Mr. John Bruziak, and there's not a problem because what he's bringing to the table is just options for the city of Brownsville. And we, at the other day, are going to make the final decision on whether we assist P U B or we don't assist on P U B, and bringing in the type of energy we need to bring in industrial companies. So this is not a conflict of interest, because P U B doesn't have anything on the table with these people. They just want to give us a look of what we could get, and that's it.
I sit on the board, this was discussed last night, they would rather this be tabled. You're not going to listen, so, you know, I'm just bringing the message to you. We are encroaching on P U B's domain.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are. They're in charge of overseeing this stuff. When they're ready, they bring it to the City Commission with their recommendation. You're trying to get ahead of them.
I can see their concern as well, with all due respect, I don't mean to disrespect you, but it seems to be a sensitive E D C issue, P U B issue as well, and I could move to table.
You have a motion to table? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Three nays? Commissioner...
I said, I was for it.
You were for it, okay. So this is tabled. It is tabled. Please, you've been in contact with P U B.
Yeah, I was not here to talk about the P U B at all, okay? I was here to talk about our company.
The project, the project you're working on, they're analyzing what you've got, so...
That's correct, Mayor, but I just wanted to let you know that we are talking to all the other cities that are in the valley. We're not just talking to Brownsville. I just wanted you to be more informed, not to, not to what I'm talking to P U B about, but more so so that you know the difference of what we do as a power company and what you need to know as commissioners that we felt was important, that there are different types of power companies, and we are a power company that handles surge power. And that's important for industrial growth, and that was all.
They handle our power, and those issues are addressed there, and they bring it to us. So I urge you to work with them at their request, we'll table, and appreciate you coming. Thank you.
And just for the record, and the reason I wanted to put this on the table, because we have a board, G B I C, and they're tasked to bring in industrial companies to our city. And how are they ever going to bring industrial companies to our city if P U B can't give them the power they need? We had an interest with a steel company who wanted to come to Port of Brownsville.
That's not fair.
But we didn't have, we don't have the power to sustain a steel mill or other industrial companies. So what's the purpose of G B I C and the B E D C if we can never bring these industrial companies down here because we can't have, we don't have the power to give them what they need to relocate to Brownsville? This person over here was given an alternative, and not residential, but commercial-type energy, which would enable G B I C and these boards to go out and say, "Look, we have the power to bring in a steel company, we have the energy to bring in this industrial company, but, you know, what are we doing, spinning our wheels, spending all these millions of dollars at G B I C and B E D C if we don't have the power to bring in these companies that they're tasked to do?" And that's the issue here.
Commissioner, with all due respect, again, you're encroaching in P U B's domain.
Nah, you know what? They're ours, they're beneath us.
You're misrepresenting, okay, the entire, the entire, okay, mission of P U B and what it does for our city. And the matter of the steel company, that was taken up appropriately...
Mayor, you sit on that board.
I'm sorry, but I'm speaking. That was taken up appropriately with the finance, our financial advisors here, our bond counsel and everybody else, the recommendations that were made, and everything was put on the table, and it was decided in the best interest of the city. So, I mean, you're a commissioner, you have your right to your point of view.
You sit on that board.
But let me finish. I sit on the board, and I'm relaying to you what they're telling me, and they asked at this table. Now, you want to make a big deal out of it when it's not a big deal?
I don't want to make a big deal out of it. But when I talked to John Bruziak from P U B, he didn't have a problem with them looking at the Port of Brownsville as somewhere they can be or somewhere around P U B. I don't know why, you sit on that board, what has your, what have you done to lift the capacity of energy we have in the city so we can attract major industrial business? On why we spent four million dollars a year...
I'll answer that.
Yeah.
I'll answer that. One of our former board members is here, Chris. Chris, who is right there. When we got on the board, no reserves, okay? High utility rates, the highest in the region, we couldn't buy extra power. Based on our policies, we were able to build our reserves for twenty-five million. We bought fifty-four megawatts of coal generation, which lowered utility rates for every citizen here in Brownsville. Had we not done what we did, we would not be able to acquire those fifty-four megawatts. So that's something that we did as a board and the city together.
You're not answering the question, though. What have you done to be able to sustain an industrial-type company coming into Brownsville?
We worked with B E D C, we worked with the city, we worked... There's many things that are going on, like the D cell plant, wind generation, coal generation. There's many things that are going on that you're not aware, and you can't be aware. You attend the meetings, we get more...
I know exactly what's going on there.
Okay, this is separate. We're off, we're off, we're off the subject matter. Thank you for coming, and it's tabled. Let's move on. Thank you. It shouldn't be a big deal, it makes it a big deal. Okay, you all want to take a five-minute break? No? We'll go straight into our regular meeting then. Okay, would you please...
Pledge of allegiance.
We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please raise your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one day under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Steve Dormand will be lead us in the prayer. Thank you, Pastor.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for being good to us tonight. Thank you for bringing us to this place. Thank you for this incredible city you've given us to live in. We ask tonight that you would bless our leaders, that you would give divine wisdom and understanding and direction, that you would give grace for the implementation of every good thing from your hand. We ask, Father, that you would do these things, and we will give you honor and glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, thank you for coming. Okay, I'm going to skip the mayor's report today. There's a lot, but I'm going to skip. Commissioner's report, Commissioner Agnes.
I will skip out my report, too, Mayor.
Thank you. That's it, then? Then let's go to... I have two requests to move item fifteen, sixteen up, and then fourteen before twelve and thirteen, and move them up. Can I have a motion to move them up? We have a motion. Can I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen first, City Secretary, and then sixteen, and then we'll do fourteen and twelve and thirteen.
Item fifteen, consideration and action to authorize interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsville and the county of Cameron with the agreement consented in participation of Cameron County Tax Assessor Collector.
Honorable Mayor and members of the commission, we have for you today a project that we've been working on with the tax office, Tony Sagida. He has two of his representatives here, Jose, I mean, Jesse Garcia, the chief deputy for the tax office, and Tony Machaca, the special project coordinator, in case there's any particular questions. But what it is, it's a statewide program that we want to implement locally called the Sofflaw Program. And what it is, it's another way for us to make our collection efforts more efficient for municipal court. And briefly, what it does is, it requires two memorandums of interlocal agreements, one between Brownsville and the state of Texas, Texas Department of Transportation, and one with the county of Cameron. And what happens in a nutshell is, if you owe money to the court and you want to go renew your license plates, there's going to be a flag on that license plate. So when they go to renew it, they're going to get a notice from the tax office saying, "We can't renew it until you go clear up this matter at municipal court." And so, they'll then be required to come to municipal court and get a little certificate that we're going to charge for, we're going to split the cost with the state. And there's some other costs involved, but to give you an example, if you'll go to the next one, it's going to cost approximately eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, for example, for two thousand and nine, which is very cheap. To set up the program, we will monthly or quarterly send data to the county, which they're going to transfer up to the Department of Transportation, which is going to put a flag on those plates that have outstanding, whatever drivers, there's always the license plate addition, you know, identifying the person that got the citation. So assuming it's the owner of the car, then when they go to renew, they won't be able to. And it's pretty clear-cut, we have about seventy-four hundred outstanding tickets for two thousand and nine. Those are violations, not tickets, but, and they range between one hundred and eighty-two to four-hundred... But, um, and they range between 182 to 472 for each violation. Uh, so you can see, uh, it's worth it. Uh, the $863 is going to bring in a lot of money. So we would encourage you all to approve both interlocal agreements and, uh, give us some more tools to, uh, increase our collections.
Judge, is that a one-time fee?
It's going to be, uh, we have to maintain a $500 balance in the Department of Transportation account for us. And then, uh, there's a small fee for each, so like for, it would be basically annual, right? For each violation that we send in, it costs 12 cents, which is cheaper than mailing a letter to, to tell them to come to court. And, um, so.
And I'm sure we'll get that back, right? I'm sure we're going to get that back, and that's a more based on?
We'll, we'll, we'll get that back, just getting the certificate, uh, from each person. We're going to charge $20 for the certificate, we're going to keep 10, and we're going to give 10 to the county. Uh, and so, uh, I would highly encourage you to accept this interlo- uh, local agreement between the two entities.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
It's a great program. Would it approve?
Okay, can we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Camarillo made a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Turianni. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16?
Uh, same.
I need to, I need to read it though.
She's got to read it to the rest.
I need, uh, item 16, consideration and action on resolution number 2010 dash 042 to authorize the city of Brownsville to enter into a lo, interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for Skoff Law Services contract for marking the Texas motor vehicle registration records.
Okay, item 16, same thing?
Same argument, it's just the second component of the same, uh, plan.
Okay, Commissioner Camarillo makes a motion. Commissioner Turianni, second sip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
We want to thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, then we go to item 14.
Item 14, consideration and action to adopt the plan of finance regarding the issuance of certificates of obligation.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm members of the commission. My name is Noe Nahuza, with the Stryna Housa and Company. And, uh, one of my associates, Angela Gantu, from the neighboring city of McAllen, who works now with me in Dallas. And, uh, trying to shore the rope, so.
Thank you.
Um, anyway, we've been asked, uh, by your staff to come before you to, uh, present, uh, I guess, uh, options to fund about, um, $16 million worth of, uh, of projects. On the little, on the little booklet that we just gave you, a little, uh, handout that we gave you, there's three graphs, uh, right after the cover page. Where basically, we're looking at, at issuing three types of financings for various purposes. The first purpose is a Series 2010 A C O for about $13,530,000. And when you see that $13,530,000, I'm going to zoom that a little bit, we'll clarify that. A little better, maybe another one, another shot. Um, it'll be the second row on the first quadrant on the left. That's, uh, the second row says $13,530,000. The purposes that those processes will be used for are in the quadrant below it, where it says City of Brownsville Projects. Um, about, about $803,000 for police vehicles, about $1,000,001 for landfill improvements, $60,000 for the bucket lift truck, $100,000 for traffic, uh, traffic control devices, um, 316 for ambulances, $1,003,000 for library roof repairs, $2 million for West Rail project funds, and $5 million for street construction improvements. Total of about $10,779,000. Then about $2,000,002 for the construction of a gymnasium. So that brings the total to about $29,979,000. The cost of issuance will be about $358,000, for a total of $30,337,394,000. That will be, that financing, or this financing, Series 10A, will be supported wholly, but for the $2,000,002 gymnasium, by property taxes. Now, I'll tell you how, how that is impacted in a minute. The second quadrant, the 2010 B C Os, that's about $2,998,000. And that's the number right at the bottom, $2,998,000. Uh, they'll be using about $916,000 for bleachers, $1,830,000 for buildings, and $252,000 for beachboards, coal buildings. And that will be funded through $3,175,000 above that. Now, that C O will be paid by the 4B, uh, agency, right? Um, so that will not be impacting property taxes. It has the pledge, it has the collateral, it has the support of property taxes, so that when it comes to the market, it, it trades at a better interest rate. And you and I know that the sales tax revenues historically have been very good for that, for that, uh, 4B. So instead of them going out with revenue bonds, we're selling C Os. But that will not impact, uh, it's not anticipated to impact property taxes.
With the sales tax declining, um, we would have a positive valuation, so it's, it's probably a recession.
Yeah.
How, what, what kind of position would we be in?
I mean, based on what, what we've seen, we're in good shape. Uh, in fact, I don't know, I've been still, so if you want to tell them a little bit about how the fund is doing, and kind of revenues we're talking about.
Mayor, when we set up the budget for B C I C, we always look at a very conservative approach as far as sales tax growth. And we're actually using numbers from three, four years ago, as far as budgets for sales tax. Yeah, we, for the last two years, we've seen a drop in sales tax, but we're very conservative in that area. So we are very confident that we can make those debt service payments for, for this particular project.
So it won't concern, so it won't affect our bond rating?
No, it will not, ma'am. Not at all. In fact, if you go to, uh, the, the two pages from this page, you'll see the spreadsheet, and you'll see the direct impact of what, what the annual payment is going to be, I think, I thought that was.
I don't have any problem with this, because, I mean, we're already committed to it anyway. But what I'm wondering is, what kind of position it puts us financially for the future?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if something should happen, or if we need to borrow in case of emergency.
Now, again.
How much, how much, how much borrowing capacity is left, uh, after issuing this?
The B C I C right now, it's, uh, very close, we have approximately, maybe around, uh, reserves of around $300,000. Uh, that, but that doesn't include the sales tax that we'll be getting throughout the year, uh, which are another $3 million. So we feel, again, we feel very confident that we can pay for this, that B C I C can pay for this, uh, debt, debt payment.
I just want to make sure in case, worst case, Mayor.
Yeah, we are, we're okay, Mayor.
But like I said, we are committed to this.
I have one more question, Pete. And the money that, uh, G B I C is loaning us, is that going to be paid back with C O?
Well, last night, okay, on last night's meeting, uh, the, uh, we had two scenarios. Either, either for us to issue the C Os, and they would, with the agreement, they would pay us back, uh, for the debt service requirements. That was not approved last night by the board. They decided to go ahead and fund, fund the project upfront without issuing C Os.
So we're not paying any of that money back to G B I C?
Well, there are some conditions that the B C I C board and the G B I C board have to, uh, agree on, uh, within the next week or so. Uh, but, uh, right now, the, the way we understand it is that, uh, we are not going to borrow the funds for those road constructions of 2.5 million. They, they decided to go ahead and, and, uh, and pay for tho, for those projects, like a grant, provide for that, for the.
So then that still needs to come before the city commission, then?
That's not, and we have a correction tonight on the, uh, on the next item, where we have not included the G B I C O. We only include the B C I C C O. But that's something that will be handed out to you on the next, on the next item.
Okay, and I have more questions about that, but I'll wait till we get to the agenda.
Well, Pete, well, I have you up there. I understand the 3.13, okay? And the rest, I'm aware of some of the stuff that, that, that we've been working on. But my concern is this, Pete, anything we're, anytime we're increasing our operating, operating maintenance, it's a concern. Especially when our employees are not getting a raise in the past three years. We're not doing the capital improvements that we should be doing. Um, for instance, I know, I know, it sounds redundant, but I, I've been a big supporter of the arts. I have a list here of the zoo, zoo's needs. Leaky roofs, okay, they're in desperate need of repairs. They're looking at $318,000 they need. We cut their budget by $115,000, okay? They need $318,000 for roofs. Air conditioners are about to go out. They need $37,000 for that. And, you know, the sports park and all these, all these things, they're great, they're good quality of life amenities. But the zoo is like our crown jewel. It's a world-renowned zoo, and it brings in people from all over. And it's got to reinvent, reinvent itself to continue bringing people in, because how many times can you come and see the gorillas? Okay? And bring fresh dollars in from outside, not just local, okay? A new tr- uh, uh, Tropical American exhibit, or called the Wasdeka exhibit, where you'll have jaguars, and otters, and giant anteaters, vampire bats, uh, leek tater ants and stuff like that. It's estimated to cost $3 million, okay? That would increase the revenues of the zoo, increase your revenues for your budget. That's not here. You know, and, and I have a problem with no, uh, with no disrespect to the city manager, where we're going to be taking in, uh, overhead maintenance to build a gymnasium that I don't think is a priority. I think this is more of a problem. So I have an issue with some of these things. You know, public safety takes 72% of our budget, you know, which should be about 60% of it. And, and we're always struggling because we're having to, since 2006, balance a budget with reserves. Now, I have a concern that I think we're poised for a bad hurricane with this, the waters are very hot, you know? And if we do get hit, those reserves are going to be depleted quicker than what we would like, okay? And we keep balancing the budget with reserves, I don't think that's a good fiscal plan or responsible plan. And, 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 and then the priorities to me don't match the needs. Uh, I understand that, that, uh, that, uh, some of the things we wish we could have, but I don't think it's necessary. I think we should maybe put together a bond issue, go to the people, be honest, let them participate on it, and let them decide what they want. And if they want to increase the tax rate, so we can balance the budget, do the capital improvements, do the gymnasium, do the zoo, do those things that, that I think many people would like to have. But to do it this way with little input, or without proper, uh, I think prioritization, I'd be here three years trying to expand the animal shelter, and I haven't been able to do it. And all of a sudden, with a stroke of the pen, we're building a gymnasium for $2.2 million.
Mayor, I share the same concerns you do. Um, I see this wish list, and I know that I really had no part in it, and I wonder if any of the other commissioners were able to provide input in it. I know some of these items are much needed, um, but, I mean, there are some items maybe in my district that I would like to see. And I see a gymnasium, you know, in, in another district, and I'm just wondering, who put this list together? And why didn't these items come before the city commission before?
The items that we brought to you last year were the police vehicles, the landfill, the traffic bucket truck, the ambulance. Those are the items that were brought to you last year.
I'm aware of those.
The only items that we added, uh, this time around, was the library roof repairs. And my understanding is from our library director that every time it rains, there's a lot of leaks in, in that library. And he's got a lot available, with obviously, uh, information there that can get destroyed. Uh, the other part is the West Rail relocation project that we have discussed this several, several months ago.
That was approved.
And the other item that, that obviously, we, we hadn't had added was for streets, uh, street construction and, and, and right-of-way acquisitions. Because I understand that we still need to acquire some right-of-way on the 511, uh, project that, that's under construction. So, um, those are the items that were added. There are a lot more requests, especially that were made last year for bu, for capital projects that are obviously cannot be considered because of the funding issues. But maybe, maybe, I guess, both, both of you are saying that maybe a, a general obligation bond would, to do some of the major capital projects. But this is just a small amount that we're trying to.
Yeah, Pete, but the lack of transparency to bring here in a workshop to where we can work with the citizens and prioritize the needs. Like I tell you, let me read some to you. And this is a letter from Congressman Ortiz. Museums, aquariums, and zoolog, zoological parks are a vital part of our communities and educational infrastructure. Each year, such institutions provide more than 18 million instructional hours to schoolchildren and educators, and spend more than 14.5 billion in their communities. There are economic engines employing more than a half million Americans, spurring local terrorism and contributing to the culture fabric of our nation. To me, that is more of a priority that's been neglected by us, shamefully so, than, than a gymnasium.
But you also, you.
And all the rest of this, and all the stuff that we did not commit to, like the railroad relocation, we commit to that. The, the sports park, we're committed to that. All these things, the library, they, they needs it. I, 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 I support all that. I even support the gymnasium. But why can't we do it through a bond issue, go to, let the voters participate and approve? Because we're balancing the budget, okay, with reserves, and I, and I need to underline that. That's not the way to run the city. Every year, since 2006, we've been dipping in the reserves to balance our budget, and that's not the way to run the city. We need to be upfront with the citizens. We need this to balance our budget. We need this for capital improvements. They need to take responsibility and say yes.
Can I, can I say something? I just want to add to that, because.
Collins first. She, she has to be recognized.
Um, I share some commissioners on most concerns. Um, part of the reason I believe that we embarked on a long-range plan several years ago was to provide long-range planning and prioritization and coordination with the other entities in town. And I believe United Brownsville is currently evaluating those strategies. And I think it would behoove us to wait for that process to complete in the next few weeks so that we can look at a coordinated decision about whether to go out for a bond issue or what priorities we should be having, rather than, rather than acting in, whether it's arbitrary or not, it does at some junctures appear to be arbitrary. I think a gym, as you know, is a wonderful thing. Um, but, but I, but I do have to agree that it does seem, uh, odd. I know this comes from C D B G funds, I think, and, but why does it have to be on this sheet if it comes from C D B G funds? Why doesn't C D B G money pay for it?
They are going to pay for it.
But does every, but does.
The city, the city has the magic.
No, this is, this is a C O from the city of Brownsville. C, C D B G doesn't, is not treated separately. It's not like the 4A or the 4B, which are separate corporations. He, the, the funding will come from C D B G, but it's still part of the city of Brownsville debt issuance.
So do we have?
But it's not going to be charged to property tax.
So do we have to issue C Os for everything that goes through those C D B G, uh, funds?
If you want $2.2 million project, which C D B G funds, then does not have, the only way you can fund that, that gym is through a C O, because that obviously can be spread out over, over a long period of time to, to come up with. Right now, the only thing that C D B G has, uh, budgeted is $165,000, and those are, those are for payments for principal and interest for the, for next fiscal year, that will cover the $2.2 million.
And you gotta, you gotta, you gotta understand that this project, uh, with the gym at Calvin Park was five years ago. Four years ago, we've been trying to put a gym in that area so we could have the children of Brownsville, not have to drive all the way from the east side to all the way to Oliva Park. Drive from the east side all the way to Gonzalez Park.
I'm not arguing that. I understand the need. I'm, I'm just asking about the manner of funding it. Did you write a grant for it? I mean, what were the other options?
Mr. Calvin can answer that question for you.
I, I really don't want to be involved in, in, in a, in a place that was named after my dad. The, the project was submitted to the C D B G board as a pro, as a viable project, along with many other projects. They're the ones that made the decision as to what to bring to the commission.
So C D B G is going to fund this $2.2 million?
Yes.
Per year for 20 years, if I understand it correctly.
And the total funding for, the total funding for C D B G was 3.8?
Well, that's why you're going to go out on a bond, so they can, so they can fund it over a series of money years.
Just one question answered, Mr. Calvin. The total funding for C D B G was what, 3.8, 3.6?
Yeah, the only thing that's, that's coming out of this, when, you'll see it later on, is $165,000. That's the annual payment that is required to serve as the $2.2 million over a 20-year period.
Okay, Pete, but he just told me that C D B G funds are going to fund this gymnasium ultimately.
Over a 20-year period.
Okay, because I just recently applied for a grant for a Boys and Girls Club on my own time. And I was told that there were too many projects, and I had requested too much funding. But now I understand why too many projects were denied funding. But now I understand why too many projects were denied funding. Thank you.
I would just...
Allow Mr. Alex Resendez to speak.
Mr. We're not, we were not through with this item that once Mr. Inahosa finishes, you'll realize that we're doing this without a tax rate increase for that server.
Let me ask, let me add to that. Just to clarify everything. So you want transparency? Here it goes. She applied for the CBD, CDBG funds to build a Boys and Girls Club, which was gonna be a unit of Los Fresnos. It was gonna be a Brownsville Boys and Girls Club. And it was gonna be at the Cameron County, inside Cameron County with a little bit part of the city.
That's incorrect.
No, no. That's what I was told. Let me finish, let me finish. So the board, and I talked to the board because I wanted to help her get this Boys and Girls Club, but the fact that it was a Boys and Girls Club for Los Fresnos and the fact that it was in county property, they didn't seem like it was the right thing to do to fund a Boys and Girls Club that didn't belong to Brownsville, but were using Brownsville funds. You know, why would you build a boys' club for Los Fresnos in Cameron Park that doesn't belong, wouldn't belong to the City of Brownsville? That's the problem that I, and that's why they're angry because here comes a gym that is gonna be inside Brownsville. It's in a low poverty-income area. But because she spent all her time trying to get a boys' club for Los Fresnos in Cameron Park, that board, and they talked to me like, Charlie, we can't help her. I'm like, is there anything you can do? Like, no, Charlie, it's not a fundable thing because it's a Los Fresnos Boys and Girls Club in Cameron Park. So you have sour grapes right next to me, mad because we're gonna get a, uh, uh, we're trying to get a gym for a low-poverty area in my district so these kids don't have to travel ten, fifteen miles to the other side of town. And it's something we've been working on for years, since I barely got on the city commission. I think you need to wait your turn and you need to put in for stuff that benefits Brownsville and that's good for Brownsville. I mean...
The long-range plan is not...
Let's have some order here, okay?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something.
Before you say that, look, CDBG is already spending four hundred and twenty-three thousand on the debt of Calvin Park, okay? And by spending two point two million on the gymnasium per year, it's taking away from other projects, whether it's her project or other project. There's the zoo and other projects that are quality of life also.
Just to clarify, and I clarified with Ben Medina and he clarified with the board, the property is in city limits. It just happens to be owned by the county and they were donating the property. In city limits, in an area that is the poorest in the nation to service hundreds of kids. And I clarified with that with you, excuse me. I clarified that with you, Commissioner, and you know it. And I clarified that with anyone else who had questions. I clarified it on Facebook. I clarified it by email with city staff. And Ben Medina clarified it with the board. And it would only be, and I clarified this with you too, it would only be a unit of Los Fresnos for a couple of months until we got our own charter and it would be called the Greater Brownsville Boys and Girls Club.
This is because the one that here went bankrupt and...
Yes, and then, in fact, a couple of weeks ago, the regional director for the Boys and Girls Club contacted me and said that we could get our own charter from the get-go. And I told you that too.
Can I speak, Mayor? Okay, now, what is it? Dr. Gow, and then you're gonna speak, okay?
The long-range plan is not about waiting your turn respectfully. It's about determining priorities and cost and benefit ratios for our community. It's not about waiting your turn.
Oh, I totally understand.
And there were many, many worthy projects that did not get funded.
Exactly. And just, so you'll know, some of these projects are the same projects that come back every year. And CDBG funds pays for the administration costs for these nonprofits. And they keep coming back every year. They're never able to sustain themselves and the money just goes back to the same people every year. I mean, I understand you applied also.
No, I did not personally.
No, no, not you, but the farmers market applied. But then it wasn't funded by the board either. But that's not my fault. I mean, that's not my fault why the farmers market didn't get the funding they requested either. And I would've loved for you to get what you wanted, for you to get what you wanted. But that board chose to go a different way and it just seems like you're angry because here we have a chance to put a gym in an area that's been waiting for that gym for twenty years and it's gonna be paid for not by city taxpayer dollars, but by CDBG funds. And it's not, okay, what do you want, anteaters or a gym? I mean, I don't know what, and you know, the mayor has sour grapes too because he's not getting any more for the animal shelter. So there's just a lot of pettiness. And it's just, we need to move on for what's best for the City of Brownsville.
Okay, let me respond. First of all, Commissioner, I wish you would not attack anybody on this board. It's not personal. It's not sour grapes. It's not anger. We just have our own opinions. We feel the priorities are not in line with those opinions, but there's no reason to attack anybody here.
What's your priority, anteaters?
Well, I feel that that's more beneficial to the community.
For the kids to have a park.
Let me say, I do support the gymnasium. I didn't say I didn't support it. I'm just saying that we need to prioritize and maybe rethink of how to best do this and being more transparent and more participation from the public would help. And consider doing a bond issue to where we take care of all of our problems by addressing the community and telling them, look, we're having problems balancing our budget since two thousand and six. We're having to dig into the reserves. And we're running the risk to where we get hit by a disaster that we don't have the reserves to respond like we're supposed to. That's what the reserves are for. That's the responsible way of planning. And what's more important? The jaguar, the anteaters that bring sales tax revenues that allows us to build a gym, okay? To do other capital improvements through increased property values and sales taxes? Or is the gym the priority? You know, that's the way it is. We don't agree with you, that doesn't mean we're against you. We're just saying that we need to be more transparent. I suggest that we do the three point one, three million for the UIL in anticipation of the UIL. I suggest that we not do the gym at this time. I suggest that we do those things that we're committed to, like the West Rail relocation, the library roof repair, the ambulances, the police request here, and that's it. The rest, let's put it on hold and have more discussion on it and look for a way maybe to selling bonds and trying to balance our budget.
My name is Reverend Alex Resendez. I represent several people out there. Anyway, my concerns is this. The city charter, la ley de la ciudad de Brownsville, que ustedes mismos abyan by, okay? And I'm gonna say something. On this, I'm for the mayor, what the mayor is saying. You have to prioritize. You have to, what's first? Hurricane comes and we're not thinking about hurricanes. Está muy bien el mayor en eso, yo lo respaldo en eso, ¿verdad? Y lo respaldo también en que tiene que primero pensar dónde vas a gastar este dinero. Se han gastado millones y millones de dólares, no nomás en el sports park, en diferentes problemas con el POV aquí y allá. Pero el city charter dice, the city charter says that when you owe monies, okay, and you're not getting revenues and all this and that, el público, la gente, the people, the city charter says that, you must bring it up to a vote with the people. You all cannot do whatever you all want. You all cannot ask for monies and more monies and more money. Porque el city charter los está parando a ustedes. And if you read the city charter and you get your attorney to read it, ahí dice que la gente, the people of Cameron County, the people of Brownsville, Texas are superior to all of you. You all cannot be saying, I want a million dollars for my gymnasium or two million or three million. The other guy cannot say, well, I would like to have thirteen million for my parking. It doesn't work that way. Read the city charter, con respeto a ustedes, with all due respect, you all are violating the citizens' rights, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Resendez.
Yo les bendiga.
And you know, and the criticism about the animals, you know, I'm not ashamed about it. Because let me tell you something. It says a lot about a community, about how we take care of our animals. And to slaughter seven thousand pets a year unnecessarily is unconscionable to me as a community. And to be asking for three years to expand the animal shelter because it was built dysfunctional, okay? It was brand-new, beautiful, with a capacity of sixty, eighty kennels only for a community this size, is unconscionable. We're picking up twenty, twenty-five pets a day to where we have to kill twenty-one pets a day on the average. To me, that's unconscionable. So the criticism I get from the commissioner about the animal, I don't apologize for that. But everything is, to me, a priority, just like the zoo is, the museum, the streets, the police, in case of emergency, balancing the budget. I think I put everything in perspective because I'm a mayor that's engaged and wants a better community. I wanna build a better Brownsville. But I want transparency when it comes to issuing debt that we're asking the citizens to pay. I want us to prioritize. And maybe it's not the animal shelter. The zoo comes first before the animal shelter. You heard me speak on behalf of the zoo. Because I really believe the zoo is a crown jewel and it has more of a priority than a gym that's gonna cost us more in operating maintenance than the zoo that's gonna bring in to offset and increase our budget revenues. Thank you. Go ahead.
This is a plan of finance that is being presented to you tonight. It is up to you to tell us what areas do you want to include or eliminate from this particular plan.
So Peter, you're telling us that if they change it, then they're not gonna complain about it?
We don't, I'm sorry?
Are you telling us that if we change it, they're not gonna complain about it?
All I'm saying is this is just a plan that's being presented to you tonight. It is your decision as to how you're gonna vote on this. We don't vote on the COs until July twentieth. That's when we actually, you actually authorize us to sell the certificates of obligation. But right now, it's just a plan.
I'd like to, I'd like to, based on the fact that we don't have to raise taxes to get these streets done, based on the fact that, based on the recommendations of our finance director, that everything's okay right now, pending a hurricane category five, that we lose everything. If we lose everything, what is gonna matter? Bottom line, based on those recommendations by the city, I'm gonna approve item fourteen.
I haven't had a call for a vote, it's still in discussion.
Okay, well, you can discuss after.
You just said that we don't vote on it until July.
No, you vote on a plan, on the plan. So once we have a plan, then we can start the wheels in motion and issue the bonds on July the twentieth. By law, we have to advertise thirty days before the certificates are sold. So that's how...
Does anybody in the public have anything to say?
I got a question.
You wanna say something, Commissioner?
It's an action item.
I have a question.
It's an action item.
I can open it up. Does anybody wanna have anything to say?
I have a question.
Commissioner Tureny?
Yes. Can either yourself or bond counsel explain the legality of this action? I think that would be helpful so that people at home, people here in the audience can understand what the process is. So if you could do that for us?
Yes, so we asked Mr. Tom Spurgeon from McCall, Parkinson, Horton. Our bond counsel is here tonight. He can answer those questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete, and Mayor, and Commissioners. I am Tom Spurgeon, I'm with McCall, Parkinson, Horton. We've been your bond counsel for a long time and delighted to be back here. And also to address your question. I understand the interest in the community and the questions you may have and those type of things as to how the issuance of COs is consistent with provision in your charter that seems to say that you have to vote all sorts of taxes.
Well, before you start talking about the charter, have you looked at the charter and are you aware what the provisions are?
Yes, sir, I am. I am. I'm absolutely aware of that. And the distinction is that there's, and I'll go back even to that newspaper article that was in the paper last week that made reference to the Friendswood case. There's several things about that. But number one, the Certificate of Obligation Act, or let me step back for a second. The Certificate of Obligation Act was actually enacted in nineteen seventy-one. It was a recognition on part of the legislature to permit the issuance of tax obligations to help finance improvements for cities and counties in a, essentially in a less expensive manner, without having to go to a vote. The reason that the legislature enacted that, or the way they're able to enact that, is that the Constitution does not require cities and counties to vote bonds. That constitutionally, it's not required. That is true with respect to school districts. It's true with water districts and a few other types of political subdivisions. But it's not true with respect to cities and counties. So the legislature enacted the Certificate of Obligation Act to allow cities and counties to issue certificates of obligation secured with the added warrant tax, which, as you well know, is the most secure indebtedness that you can issue and gets you the best interest rates and those type of things without having to go through a vote. But they also then put in the mechanism that you have to give notice of intention to the public that you're doing this. And originally, it used to be you had to have the notice in at least fourteen days before you sold the COs. That's been increased to thirty days. And so it gives notice to the public of what is going on. And so what's, and let me, one other thing. In the CO Act itself, there's a specific provision that says cities and counties, or cities rather, can use this act regardless of any provision in the city charter to the contrary. So the provisions in the city charters, not just yours, but in charters throughout the state that have similar provisions, are essentially overridden by state law. And one of the provisions, one of the rules of law, is that state law is going to trump city charters. So it may look inconsistent. I understand where people may be confused and those type of things, but from a legality standpoint, you're absolutely permitted to do what you're doing. The Attorney General's Office has approved certificates of obligation since essentially nineteen seventy-one with, in recognition of the fact that there are charters there to the contrary. The Friendswood case is, there's a couple of things about that. Number one, the holding of the Friendswood case didn't specifically address, or it's unclear, let's put it this way. It's unclear whether or not the district court said that the charter trumped the state law. It had a holding against the city, but there are really two different issues that were going on in that case. And it was frankly unclear which direction the district court was going. The Attorney General's Office doesn't actually look at the district court case as being dispositive of overall state law policy. It is dispositive with respect to that particular issue, but it's not with respect to other practice. So that case was decided eleven months ago and the Attorney General's Office has continued to approve certificates of obligation. They don't view that there's been any change in state law or the legality of being able to do that without a vote. So from a legality standpoint, Commissioner, you're absolutely permitted to do what you are doing and you're not in violation of your charter.
And then as far as the, there's also differences between the Friendswood Charter and obviously the City of Brownsville Charter regarding the specifics of the actions that can be taken?
That's correct. I mean, I believe you're right. I think the, and I've not actually looked at the Friendswood Charter. I think it makes reference to certificates of obligation specifically. I don't think the Brownsville Charter does. I think it's a little more generic, if you will. And so the question is, could a city charter be more restrictive in, and if it literally said you can't issue COs without a vote? It's actually probably a question that a court might determine, but I think the rule is gonna come back and say state law still trumps. And because they've spoken very specifically on the issue. And there's, like I say, there's sort of a whole body of law in terms of how those things are interpreted. But that's the way the Attorney General's have read that for years.
Thank you.
See you about.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Look, based on the discussion, I would like to really have more input.
I already made a motion.
I haven't called for a motion.
I already made a motion.
I would like to put the Imagine Brownsville, United Brownsville, to work.
Now you like it?
No, where is it?
Oh, okay.
We're stuck with it. We're stuck with it. We spent two million dollars on it, put them to work. I still think, what I think is still, I still hold true to that. But put them to work, they're getting money from us, put them to work. Get them to look at doing a bond like the first Brownsville...
So they're gonna decide whether we do streets or not? We fund streets?
Remember, Pete, when we did, what was it, first Brownsville, Brownsville first? We did thirty-six million dollars worth of bond, I think? Was that right? You remember that? Yeah. Okay, maybe we can do something like that to where we can do the gymnasium and the zoo and other stuff. So based on that, I would make the motion to...
I got a motion out there first. I got a motion out there first.
I haven't recognized it. I make the motion to-
Counsel?
To-
I have a motion on the floor.
To do the, um, the, the, uh, sports park, three point one, three, uh, uh, three, three million one hundred thirty thousand. Do the-
Point of order.
Uh, police patrol vehicles, the landfill, the traffic bucket, the fire EMS, the library and the West Rail location. Those are the things that, that have to be done because we already committed to it. Is that right? Those, we already committed to. The rest, we don't have to do, and I think we can put Imagine Brownsville to work to involve the community-
It's called United Brownsville, by the way.
United Brownsville.
Point of order.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I think there was a motion that was on the table. Commissioner Atkinson had previously had a motion that was on the table, require a second.
I had a motion right before you.
Oh, you put a motion, a point of order, is that what you're saying?
Well, he's raising a point of order.
I did not recognize, oh, he's pointing-
The mayor, I'm sorry, Commissioner Atkinson made a motion, then you made a motion when his motion was still on the table and he made a point of order to the fact that his motion was on the table.
Okay. Do we have a second to his motion? Dice for lack of a second. I'd like for people to get involved, put Imagine Brownsville to work, let's do what we have to do, that is the, the, prepare for the U I L, uh, the three point one, three million, do the, uh, police patrol vehicles, the landfill, the traffic bucket, the patrol devices, the fire EMS, the library and the West Rail, plus the cost to issue those certificates and take the rest to the United Brownsville to see if we can do a bond issue or something.
So you wanna increase the amount?
I'm not increasing the amount.
I think if you add all that in, we're increasing it significantly, huh?
No, we're not, we're leaving out the gym, we're leaving out all the rest.
No, all you do is leaving out the gym, but, uh, you can pack the kids in that district.
Okay, well, I, I made a motion, can I have a second? I think that's a responsible thing to do.
All we left out was the gym for the children.
No, we got the streets.
Oh, you left out the streets?
Yeah, we're leaving that out to do the bond.
You're leaving out the streets, which we desperately need?
I support, Commissioner, I support the gym and I support the streets and I support the zoo. Let's do a bond, let's come out with a plan-
Why?
And put Imagine Brownsville to work. I think that's responsible.
That's so vindictive, man, you're so vindictive.
It's not being vindictive, Commissioner.
Something that you've, you've, you've stood for the last three years shaming United Brownsville and now you want it to work because you're not getting your way. Cause you're not getting your way, you're not-
If the commission wants to reject that, they can reject it and give some help. I'll, I'll support you.
Commissioners, come up with another solution, if somebody make a reasonable motion.
Well, I mean, I can't make a motion, right? Because he has some motion or-
I have a motion, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion? May I move to amend the motion?
You may move to amend.
Thank you. I would move that we table this for tonight and discuss it and come up with some innovative ideas, taking into consideration our long range plan. I have no desire to keep a gym away from kids in your district. I'm just not convinced that I agree with this approach. So that would be my amended motion to table it for now and relook at it.
Before you do that-
Other than the three point one though?
Before we do that-
The three point one has to be-
Wait a second, wait a second, please, before we do that, can we at least agree to pass the, the, the sports park three point one, three, because they, they need to get ready for the U I L.
I'll make a motion, I'll second your motion.
No, wait a second, no, I'm, I'm, I'm happy, can you consider that? To me, it's, to me, it's relevant, all the rest. But I, I think what's priority right now is that we gotta prepare for the U I L. We already committed to it.
Right, but I'm not asking to table it for years, it's only two weeks.
We're on a timeline, Rose. It has to be done by February.
If the consensus among the commission is that we should do that, then I would agree with that.
I would draw my motion, I would draw my motion, okay? Is that okay to you? You draw your amendment?
Okay.
And what do you want to fund?
I'll make the motion to, 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 just for right now, do the three point one, three million dollars, okay?
I have a quick question.
I'll second.
Then we'll come back next, next, next two weeks.
I'll second that.
Mayor, may, may I say something? Um, I have a deadline when I start preparing the tax rate for the coming year for two thousand eleven. There are certain dates that I have to have the information ready, meaning the debt service requirements that will be made for two thousand eleven. If I have this information in August, it'll be late because the, I, obviously I need to prepare and, and, uh, publish the tax rates, the, the debt service rate and the, and the M and O rate. And that's done in August, early August. If we delayed longer, uh, might as well prepare this for fiscal year two thousand eleven with the understanding that I will charge the police vehicles, the landfill, the traffic, the ambulances, those expenses have already been made. That will be charged to the general fund. So the general fund, fund balance will be reduced by those amounts in fiscal year two thousand ten.
But two weeks is not August, Pete. Are you saying you can't wait two weeks either?
It required, okay. The way the law is, we have to, once we decide on the certificates of obligation issuance, we must publish thirty days. That moves us into, our next meeting is in, in July. So that means by August, there will be on the-
Correctly, for a moment, yeah, thirty days, right?
Yes, for publication.
So I, I need, I need your help here. I need, we need, we need the debt service requirements in late July so that we can prepare the tax rate. This delays us.
Yes, it does, but-
Unless we do the work, unless we do the C O's, October is our deadline. If we do it in October, it has to be October first, but that rate will not be part of the two thousand eleven tax rate.
Let, let me say-
Well, it does, but I believe two weeks is reasonable.
Let, let me, let-
I don't, I don't, I'll tell you this, let me tell you why I think you're okay. If, if we look at, uh, there's another spreadsheet that talks about your payments being higher, so for next year, for eleven. So if they're already higher, you can justify some tax rate higher, because that's what you need to do. So the two weeks that you're asking for is more than reasonable, because the objective is not to make the payment higher, it's actually to keep it flat. So we got, for law purposes, for set up a tax rate purpose, you're fine. This is what you're trying to avoid by having to have it approved for now.
Mayor, let me, let me-
We can finish, please.
Mayor, let me, let me, let me, let me make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this right now, but switching the two point two for the gymnasium from the G D, ah, C D B G funds to add it to the cost of the streets to bring it to seven point two million for streets that is badly needed in Brownsville and approve this, switching the funds from the gym, because y'all don't, y'all don't, y'all don't feel good about that. Let's move it to the streets and we can all have more streets done in our district.
I think we need a discussion on this because I want, I want the zoo to get something out of this. And I think we should discuss this.
But if, if, but the zoo or the gym, you're, you're, it's, you're making it a, a, an issue with, with what's more important, I think streets-
Well, let's have this discussion.
But can I make that motion?
Let's have a workshop.
Can I make that motion?
I think that we all just want input.
We already have a motion, uh, to, to the-
The most, well, I think I undid it, but I can do it again. I would like to see this item table until next, the, next meeting.
Two weeks, uh-
Besides the, the three point one though, right?
According to, no, according to the council, according to the bond council, you said two weeks is not gonna hurt anything. So we can table the whole thing, right?
We're okay. Except the three point one that we need.
The bond council said it's okay, two weeks.
Hold on, we don't weaken, can you, if you mind, tabling everything but the three point one, which we already approved, so we can, they need to break ground in the next
Tomorrow?
Week. And I, and I would second your motion if you, if you would make that motion.
All right.
Okay? And I'll second her motion on to table this besides the three point one million.
You're gonna get four to the three point one?
Yeah.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that, same motion I made. So, uh, let's have, let's have, let's have a motion, uh, three point one, three million.
I think Mr. Longoria would like to say something, Mayor.
We can always call for a special meeting next week with a workshop and an action item for next week.
True.
I mean, why wait two weeks if, 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 if we can give them a co, does that interfere with your schedule?